Alright, we're gonna go ahead and call it public hearing to order. This is a public hearing for twenty-six Reed Lane. Okay, so we have the application before us, so we're gonna hear from anybody who wants to speak today. Pros, cons, uh, when you stand up, please state your name and what town you're from, and then go ahead. So, Mr. Moreau, do you have anything to say to start with?
I really don't, I'm just trying to go through the process here.
Alright, uh, anybody wanna speak first? Mr. Nelligan?
Well, I think Mr. Moreau, right, he has, he speaks first, or?
He's already declined.
Oh, good, that was easy, huh?
Okay, if you're not ready, Mr. Nelligan, guy back here, yes, sir, could you state your name and?
Yeah, my name is John Clark, and I live in Parsons Field. I've lived next door to Roger. And now I live a couple houses away for eleven years. I've had him do work on my wife and my vehicles. He's always treated us fair. He has complied with all the things that you put in front of him. I think he should have an opportunity to have that, that repair shop. There's a lot of low-income people that count on him to keep their vehicles running, so they can get back and forth the way. So I appreciate you letting me say that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm Gerald Gilbert, I live right down the road from Ron Sandberg. As far as traffic, there's hardly nothing. You know, when he was doing the business. Uh, and like he did said, he helps people that can't afford to go to a garage. And I think he's doing a great service to the community. So, I have no complaints about him putting his business there, and I'm closest one of those, so. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else?
Yes, ma'am.
David DeShanwell, I've been in Parsons Field since Roger's been here. I've known thirty-five days, been his wife, and everybody's son just seen enough, so many people this community. He didn't come here to start businesses, he came here to start helping people.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Joyce Trent, uh, I live in Parsons Field. My husband and I own property, uh, as other vouchers. And we have no, he lived across the road from us, in Maplewood. Uh, never any problem with noise or anything from vehicles. And we have no concerns now with any type of noise or anything, no problem. So we would, uh, definitely say the capacity shop.
Yes, sir.
My name's John Russell, I live here in Parsons Field. My driver does honest work at a honest place, and, uh, I think he deserves a chance over the rest.
Anybody else? Mr. Nelligan?
Oh, is that me? I get it.
Yes, sir.
Well, uh, I guess first, um, should a voter's emails be read into record? Or does the board do that, or?
They're available to the public.
Yeah, it's not, uh, I mean, okay, I guess we could do that. Um, or you'd be welcome to if you'd like.
Sure, I don't know the, the voter business, so if you, if you guys read it in, or if you'd like me to read it, I'll read it.
So I, I would just assume you go ahead and do it, Mr. Nelligan.
Uh, let's see, so I'll, I'll just say that this is from a voter.
But it, I, we'd like a name.
Oh, okay, the name's Doug Williams. Uh, I am raised from a serious opposition to propose auto repair business on Reed Lane. As a voter, I feel such an activity would be detrimental to the quiet residential nature of the neighborhood of Maplewood. Please feel free to contact me at this email address if you wish to discuss it further. Doug Williams, eight oh eight Maplewood. Uh, here's another voter, this is the Reynolds and Walston family, veteran voters. The planning board members are writing on behalf of the family to request the board to deny the application of proposed auto repair business. Uh, commercial auto repair business located in this village residential district is not all compatible with the current residential neighborhood. Traffic and noise associated with such a commercial establishment has had, and if allowed to continue, will have an adverse impact on the property and the adjacent property owners. As well, the commercial auto repair shop will have detrimental effects on our property value. Negative impact on privacy and quiet enjoyment of our land. Our family has enjoyed Maplewood for over forty-five years. That what has been seen and heard from twenty-six Reed Lane, which has been allowed to continue for the past four years in violation of the town's land use ordinances, is representative of a commercial auto repair garage in a residential district. And what you're being asked to approve will be awful for this community. We ask the board to apply the town ordinances and standards voted for by the townspeople in Parsons Field, and find this proposed use is entirely incompatible with the immediate surrounding neighborhood. Please deny this application, thanks for your consideration. Reynolds and Walston Street. Doesn't give their address, I think it was. Alright, those two read it, yeah?
Yes, sir.
So I, I just got a few things to read. But yeah, I'd like to thank the planning board for having this meeting. And, uh, I, I gave it to Lindsay, uh, references to the town ordinances are required by the applicant, any applicant. This was, any applicant to use the word change for a use of purpose. I'm confident after reviewing the applicable ordinances and lack of basic information still not submitted by the applicant, to this date, for site plan review, I want you to deny. Alright, so I'm gonna talk briefly about a few other ones that I think I brought up with you, Rick, at the site plan. First of all, the applicant at the board or the voter has the burden of proving that proposed land use activities is in conformity with purposes and provisions of this ordinance. So this, the site plan review, this is page ninety-five on, on your land ordinances, provide a level of municipal review that would not otherwise occur for projects that could adversely impact a voter's or property's project area. Maintain protect the town's rural character and promote the health and safety of our townspeople. So the first part of the, uh, site plan review is the application form, which this, you deemed complete. I, I don't know the date, but I think it was July twenty-first. And it simply requires the applicant to both fill in the existing and proposed development activity, and this information is required from the board to glimpse some insight into the proposed project. As seen, uh, the applicant hasn't submitted to this board majority of the information. So therefore, uh, it's hard to comprehend how the board can determine or find any site plan review standards to be met. Uh, this is another thing I brought up with Rick at the, uh, site, is it the aspect of the rear lot, from the last, from the last application? Uh, you denied it because of, uh, you can only have a used single dwelling or a single permitted use on, on that property. And in his plan, he, he still has the house on the plan, so. I don't know if you're planning the house and the business, but I think you're only allowed to one permitted use. Uh, the right-of-way, the roadway that we talked about, Rick, is an application for the change of use from a residential to a commercial use. If you look on page thirty-one, table five, the streets and standards, uh, the type of street would be changed to commercial. And in this, this table, it says the minimum right-of-way width is sixty feet. And, and then the pavement width, or I suppose it could be ground width, is thirty feet. The town, town standards and driveway permit, uh, still haven't been issued, and I believe the site distances are greater for the town than the argument made up to. A change in use is in conformity with all applicable ordinances. Now, here's the one that, uh, Kay is page one oh two. It's called neighborhood compatibility, and I think the two other voters too have written in about that. The proposed activity will be compatible and sensitive to the character and site and neighborhood. The proposed activity maximizes the opportunity for privacy by the residents of the immediate area. The proposed activity ensures safe and healthy conditions in the neighborhood, and the proposed activity will minimize any detrimental effects on the value of adjacent properties. Alright, so this use is not compatible because, uh, for approximately four or five years, uh, the quiet use and enjoyment of my property has been obliterated by the daily operation of the new vehicle auto repair garage, twenty-six Reed Lane, by the applicant. This blatant disregard for the surrounding neighborhood and town ordinances through the continual violation of stop work orders has subsequently adversely affected my privacy and property value, and I would say the others. Unfortunately, I witnessed firsthand in the past years what a commercial auto repair garage sounds like and looks like. The noise and traffic associated with such a use, a commercial auto repair garage, has lived up to its name, saying twenty-two, twenty-six Reed Lane. I wouldn't wish this on any neighbor. Uh, I should ask, uh, if the proposed use is equally appropriate to the district than the existing use, which is residential. Uh, and currently in the, the village residential district is, uh, all residential except for the cemetery. So has the applicant, has the applicant proved that the proposed land use activity is in conformity with the purposes and provisions of the ordinance? Uh, does the planning board have the adequate information required to apply the site plan review standards? And if not, please deny the application for the second time. The applicant can appeal. Thank you.
Okay, um, anybody else? Alright, um.
I'd like to say something. If the voters he's talking about really gave a thought that have been here, he shouldn't be allowed to be speaking to them.
Yeah, those were, those were letters that were actually sent to us, so we had copies of those, so I saw no harm in actually letting him read that.
You can't, you can't, you shouldn't be here.
Indeed, and I personally give more weight to people who show up than, than letters, but those were letters from people that were listed as a voter, so it's, it's not, you know, it was right to actually let him read those. Okay, alright, so, Mr. Moreau, anything else to finish?
I guess, since Jesse's here, since it's come up, can you address stop work orders or non-compliance or compliance? I mean, can you address that piece of it, like, what's the?
I did serve Roger with a stop work order, when I just got a complaint from this Melian, in which Roger worked with me on getting the whole site remediated with removal of tires and junk cars. And he actually followed the plan. So, he made noise during that, which I got calls for weeks after, because he thought he was working on vehicles, but he was following the plan except for.
And so what was the, what were the stop work orders for?
Yeah, working on vehicles, uh, he had tire piles to get rid of, uh, there was, uh, junk cars, too many automobiles. And he had been working on vehicles, uh, most of them his own. Uh, but without him being registered, you're only allowed the two unregistered vehicles in the yard. So we, we fixed that problem.
So what, what were the, were the noise violations that they const, were they, were there noise violations, actual noise violations that, you know, per ordinance?
Every time I went out with a decibel meter, uh, where I stood, uh, I couldn't get the decimals to go over the sixty-five decimals. Uh, he's also allowed a hundred decimals for fifteen minutes, so according to our ordinance. Alright, and actually from Mr. Nelligan's property, with property lines right there, I, I really couldn't even get it to go over forty decimals continually.
Well, what's, uh, what's, and what's your, uh, as far as ordinance goes, um, what's your take on the driveway access?
You know, the state, the state usually, when, I can't speak for my area, because he does all the driveway entrance permits. But when we go with a, where there's a state road, uh, we go under the state's recommendation. Uh, most of the time, we still require a driveway entrance permit through the town, uh, even though there's a state permit that has been issued for it. So there's still another step that you'd have to go through if, if this goes open.
I've been here since May, and as far as Roger's stop water, he's been driving to mine it at six thirty, six o'clock every morning to work up there. And help two garages up there, not working at his property. This has been going on since I've been here in May, I mean, it's still exciting up there.
Uh, yes, sir, sorry.
Roger, tomorrow, the applicant. Uh, I mean, I've been trying to, you know, go through everything everybody's asked me to go through. I've been accused of doing several many things, and I haven't been. He talks about privacy, he's cameraing me every day of the week. He's got my daughter so scared in the house, he stays in the house, and he's got pictures of her, he stands in the camera every day. And, you know, I'm trying to do this the right way, and I'm sorry, I have to work for a living, I can't sit home and just take care of people that have nothing to do. And I'd really like to be able to work at my own residence and help the community the best that I know how, which is working on automobiles. I'm not asking to open a meth lab, I mean, I'm offering to work, you know, out of my own residence, which is quite a waste from everybody around. I have, I said I would do everything I could to keep the noise down, fences, closing in the compressor. I mean, I tried to do everything, but nobody wants, you know, the people that are involved just don't care. It's all about them, and that's the way it's gonna be. That's pretty much, you know, what I could say about that, and I do have another driveway permit, just in there.
Yeah, I think we have that.
No, you don't have this one. This one's a commercial one.
So Roger, again, question for you, you were just, you're saying that if you operate out of your residence, so if you were to, if this were to go ahead, it would be a single use?
You want to take a look at that?
So where is your residence then?
That's issued today.
My residence is at the end of the driveway, and my daughter is staying in the other residence at the moment. And I would hope that it could continue to work that way. Because, I mean, under the order of the commercial driveway, and the driveway has been changed over to that house down there, which now has frontage, which now is no longer a, what they call a bad lot.
Alright, I missed your question, Brendan, I'm sorry.
I, I was just, uh, it's just that he's referring to running a business out of his residence, so I'm just curious where his residence would be if this was, if this was approved. Yeah, if this was approved, where would his residence be? It couldn't be, it couldn't be both.
Right, yeah, that's one of the issues we had, was the rear lot issue, but that would have to be discussed at, at the meeting.
Like I said, it changed things around on that.
Right, right.
The driveway was directly with twenty-six, which allowed that we have some trouble over there, which makes it not a bad place anymore.
Okay, alright, Mr. Nelligan?
Unfortunately, the lots are in two different names. The rear lot is in, uh, Mr. Moreau and his wife's name. The front lot is in, uh, his parents and his name. So therefore, if he decides to sell the rear lot, that person needs right-of-way to get back there, as does Mr. Gilbert and his property. So, it's a rear lot, it, it needs, uh, it's gonna need permission for the right-of-way by the owner of his property at, at Maplewood.
But is he the owner?
He's the owner, he's the owner of both, they're, they're in different names.
But his name is on both properties?
Sure.
So I'm not following you, which?
Well, the rear lot is in a separate name, the front lot is in a separate name.
But both of them have his name on there, right?
They're not, so therefore, they're two different properties.
Right.
So the rear lot still is gonna need permission for the right-of-way.
Permission from?
From him.
So he needs to give himself permission?
No, he needs to, if he sells it.
If he sells it?
Right.
What's that, that's, we're not, we're not projecting if he's gonna sell it.
Okay, alright, you're not lost, I guess.
I'm not, I'm sorry, I wasn't following you there. So, yeah, I, I agree, the board needs to talk about the rear lot. Um, we'll discuss that at the meeting. You know, if you have something to say about it, then we can address it then, but I wasn't really following your train of thought there.
Hi, I'm Jill Kramer, I'll catch up at the planning board meeting.
Alright, so, um, let's see, we definitely need to discuss the rear lot, we need to discuss the driveway. We've still got plenty of time to go over the public hearing, once we close the public hearing, though, public discussion will be over. The board will discuss, if we have any questions, we'll ask questions, but we're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna turn it into a session to discuss it much longer, we're, we're, you know, now's the time to discuss it.
Well, okay, so then.
Right, yeah, I mean, if there's, if we have questions, we might need clarification at the meeting, but we really don't want the meeting to be a public hearing.
Yeah, that's fine, and so I'm Jill Kramer, I've been helping Roger, I'm an attorney in, uh, from Sanford, uh, at Burke Planning, and I've been helping him out with some of this stuff. And I, um, came today to clarify some of the final legal points, and so I believe the board was provided a copy of a purchase and sale, um, to, uh, to address the rear lot issue. So Roger's property, twenty-six Reed Lane, is currently occupied by his daughter. Uh, he's living in the front parcel, uh, at five seventy Maplewood. Um, we executed within a purchase and sale, so the front lot, where he's now residing, owns the fee interest for the right-of-way. And he entered into a purchase and sale itself, basically, to convey the, uh, right-of-way to the rear lot, thereby giving it road running, and it's no longer a rear lot, um, because the purchase and sale gives the rear lot now right, and now right title and interest in the right-of-way in order to establish ownership. So I think the, um, the single use, uh, based upon that would not necessarily apply at this point. And, uh, auto repair shop, you know, is permitted with the view, um, so, that, whatever.
Mr. Nelligan, do you want to address that?
Oh, that's what I was, I was saying, I, I didn't realize that he's, I'm sorry, he sold the lot, rear lot, to his daughter?
No, he hasn't sold the lot.
Oh, I, I guess I missed what you were saying.
Yeah, so, um.
I know he has two simple in, in the right-of-way to the rear lot.
Well, he owns both the front and the rear lot, they're both in common ownership, right? So if you're thinking about the house lot, but who owns the right-of-way, who owns Reed Lane? Front lot, his front lot owns, but he entered into a purchase and sale agreement with the rear lot, or where it's itself, and whoever owns the rear lot, to convey these simple of the right-of-way to the rear lot, thereby not making it a rear lot anymore.
Okay.
And Roger just did provide you, um.
The new driveway permit?
Yeah, I had the flip cop before you do want, but just to, uh, just to clarify that, that commercial use is permitted, and certainly the board can put any conditions on, uh, on the permit that it wants to, um, for him to operate his, his, um, small, uh, auto repair garage. Yeah, sure.
Did you get a chance to look at that?
Yeah.
I guess I have a question, with Jesse?
Yes, sir.
Is that right?
Yep.
Uh, what, let's say that the, the garage is approved, what, what constitutes a junkyard then if it's an auto repair garage and there's cars? You know, how, how, what happens then, I guess?
Well, I mean, he's not coming after a permit to run a junkyard. He's coming after for a auto repair shop, so.
Right.
Um, yeah, it's not gonna be for a junkyard use.
So I'm guessing, I'm asking, how many vehicles?
Two unregistered vehicles.
Oh, okay. Alright, thank you.
Cliff?
Although, Mr. Moreau, his heart's in the right place. I think he's had a couple of funky roads for a few years before he decided to comply with many of the needs, so. This all has to be taken into consideration for future purposes.
Mr. Moreau?
Kind of an answer, what you're saying, yes, I did run the garage and stuff. It wasn't an issue at the time, because I didn't have much traffic, and Mr. Nelligan wasn't living, never complained, so. It was kind of out of sight, out of mind, nobody cared. And to address that issue of not getting commercials and getting going through this policy, the last code enforcement officer that we had, Mr. David Bowler, did not do his due diligence with his job. I was told totally that nothing could be done on my property. There was no maybe, or he went through the proper channels, and this, that, and other thing. So, I mean, this whole grabbing it out thing, I blame a little bit of Mr. Bowler, not doing his due diligence.
I do think he probably based it on permissible use of the area.
Well, he was supposed to, you know, he worked in for me as well as the town when he came down.
It is an approved use in his own.
And he told me nothing could be done to it, so that's a blatant disregard of the use of souls.
Do it to Nelligan?
If, if we wanna go back in time, uh, I actually purchased my property in twenty-ten, so I was there, Mr. Moreau, I've been there since the beginning of your escapade. And, uh, in regards to Mr. Bowler, I believe, uh, your, uh, building permit for your garage, you misrepresented it by saying it was for a storage garage, a two-car garage. And in theory, you built your auto repair garage and operated it ever since, so for four years, four and a half years. So, Mr. Bowler, I think, uh, gave you that application under the, uh, belief that you were gonna have a two-car garage for storage. And we see what happened.
Yeah, it's cool sorted, and I work in it right, on my own, of course, and my own property, and my own.
Alright, so we don't.
We're not gonna get into the dignity grader.
We don't even need you two speaking to each other here, we're gonna direct this through the board.
So, I've been there since twenty-ten. So, uh, what he's been saying is, I haven't been there, I've been there through the entire process. My friend here, in the camera, he hasn't been there, he's his friend. So, uh, I live next to it, and I've put up with it for four and a half years. I've got emails back from, uh, the code enforcement officer, and I've tried to go through it the legal way, and the, and the common patient way, and, uh, so, here we are.
Uh, yeah, I kind of agree with a little bit on that, but I just wanna know about the other six years that, you know, he was there. Always working in my own vehicles, ever and ever, I don't know why.
Alright, we're, I wanna keep it in the present.
Well, I agree.
I understand, I understand.
The business is in, I'm just answering to what you said.
Yeah, I know, I know, and, and I just wanna keep it in the present and we're gonna address it before us, Brendan.
Yes. So Jesse, sir, man, other question, so you, as the person, as the agent responsible for issuing it and enforcing it, did the applicant follow the stop work order, or did he violate the stop work order?
He, he followed it, in my eyes, he followed the stop work order. Yes, sir.
I've been visiting Roger every, almost every year since he lived in Waterboro, and when he had his other house in, you know, for the sake that I haven't been there. And I've seen Roger, he did not go there, like I said before, to start a business. People started coming there to help, because they had known what to go through. So we started helping, that's how all this started, he didn't go there to start a business.
Officially, we still have thirty minutes left for a public hearing, but I don't know if there's thirty minutes of discussion left here. Mr. Nelligan?
I guess, I guess it all, it all comes right down to, I mean, we can all speak and talk about how we feel and things like that. But what it really comes down to is the town ordinance that was voted on by the residents of this town. So, that's really the bottom line.
Indeed.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, um, any closing, no? So, um, I guess we could go ahead and close the public hearing, um, we do have about. So I guess we could go ahead and close the public hearing. We do have about thirty minutes before the scheduled meeting is due to take place. I don't think we could start it early. I don't know if that would go over well. So I guess we'll call the public hearing to order at six-thirty and re-adjourn at seven o'clock for the meeting.